... of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Kate, may we have a roll call please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowen.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Bruce Robinson.
Here.
Sean Keare.
Here.
Miles Lussinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Are there any agenda changes or revisions?
Yes, a hearing, public hearing on the variance for Paul Poifair. The hearing is canceled at Mr. Poifair's request. If he decides he wants to proceed with that, we will renotice it, both mailed and published. He was saying if he does bring it back, it won't be before June. So no action is needed on your part. It's canceled for tonight.
So we, the only other piece of agenda on our, other piece of business on our agenda tonight is training, is that correct?
That's right.
Right. Please.
Hello.
Go through the motions of asking for a public comment.
Well, I could, but nobody's here, so I-
And also minutes.
And also the minutes, yes. We all received copies of the March 7th public minutes for the planning commission. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
A motion, we approve the minutes for March 7th, 2017.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Thank you, Kate. All right, Deborah.
Okay. Yes, I am, I'm going to do the training tonight and, and what I'm going to do for training is to talk about the Nell Scott Gap refinement plan that we've been working on over the last year and a half. So I am going to start out with a presentation that I made at the Oregon American Planning Association and a Washington American Planning Association conference last fall. I was a co-presenter with Kirsten Green, who is our lead planner, consulting planner on the project, and Lawrence Kumar, who is the architect who has been working with Coconut and some green on the project. So I started out, I was the public sector representative and the other two are private sector, meaning consultants. And so I, I started out with just a bit about Lincoln City. So you all will probably know these things, but it's kind of interesting to see how, you know, what other people are interested in, I guess. So anyway, new neighborhoods of the northwest, it was our topic. Lawrence talked about not only his work in Lincoln City, but also two projects he has going in Washington. I talked about the fact that we have a very rich natural environment, so it's very attractive to visitors. And, oh, and then, yes, I did mention our history, a little bit about our history. Native Americans, of course, were our first residents. Today, they make up only 2% of our population, but the Confederated Tribes of the Sletz Indians are among the city's largest employers. Of our 8,500 residents, about 85% is white. However, a growing number of Latinos comprise more than 13% of our population. The first tourist came here in 1837. That preceded white settlers by 50 years. Now we are likely to have 30,000 tourists on any summer day or holiday weekend. And we have lots of facilities and accommodations to entertain them. I talked, described the physical characteristics of our city. We're seven miles long, one mile wide typically, and our elevations range from sea level zero to over 530 feet. So, another thing I wanted to mention about this is these are our pearls, we talked about them as pearls, but they are the villages that grew up along the highway. And we incorporated in the 60s. And then, of course, Rhodes End is in parentheses up here, but we added that by annexation a couple of years ago. It is the Nell Scott Gap that I'm going to be talking about today. We, I want to mention some of our challenges we have in town. Affordable housing, of course, is a challenge. Many people don't, who don't live in Lincoln City full-time, invest in the city's housing stock. With the idea of renting to vacationers or living here part-time or after retirement full-time, the pressure of the second home market and short-term rentals limits housing that is available for full-time residents, which is critical for attracting and maintaining workforce. Very few homes are available for purchase or rent in any price range, and our housing market is missing more than the middle. Missing the, the missing middle has been kind of a trendy word in the consulting world that is pertaining to housing. But for us, you know, it extends beyond that. So, yes.
What's the green shade?
Vacant or seasonal is the label, maybe you can't see it, yeah. So we have even, even parts of our housing stock vacant and seasonal makes up 36%. Owner occupied makes up about 30% and renter occupied makes up 34%. So our economic base obviously is tourism and many of our tourism industry workers are paid low wages. 24% of our residents live in poverty. Our median family income of $42,000 is not nearly enough to purchase the average-priced home. And you have seen these statistics in our economic opportunity analysis and housing needs analysis report, and you'll be seeing more about that in a couple of months when we bring it to you for recommendation. Another one of our challenges here in Lincoln City is, of course, tsunami. In the event of a large Cascadia earthquake, we will lose hundreds of homes in Cutler City, Taft, and Nell Scott. This simulated magnitude nine Cascadia earthquake and tsunami demonstrates our need for a Plan B, places to relocate these homes and people when we have this, this kind of a catastrophe happen. And we don't know when or how large it will be, but we do know that we're about due in terms of statistics for an earthquake and, and that would cause a tsunami. So we have to be mindful of that when we're planning for our future. Another one of our issues here is connectivity. Of course, Highway 101 is our main north-south street. It's, in some cases, our only street and, and since it serves as a highway and has more than, you know, 20,000 cars a day in most parts of it, on most days, it is, it can be quite a barrier, but it is also the, the thing that, that pulls us all together and, and brings, brings our tourists to us. And we have, most of our locals have to use the highway on a daily basis just to, just to do errands and get around town. So we've been doing a lot of work on our highway. We have, in 2012, we did a walking and biking plan, and we talked about how we could make, make Lincoln City easier to get around in, especially if you're not using a car. And so then we followed up with the transportation system plan, 2015. It was adopted in, late in 2015. And so we did analysis in terms of, this, this is showing you, each mile point has, tenth of a mile is shown here at the top, and the analysis shows whether, what the speed limit is. It shows whether there are bike lanes and shoulders, travel lanes, medians, and then travel lanes going north, and bike lanes and shoulders and sidewalks. So you can see it's chopped up quite a bit here. So we have varying number of lanes, lack of continuous sidewalk, inadequate bike facilities, and, and posted speeds vary from 30 to 45 miles an hour. So since we prepared the, the transportation system plan, now we have a set of standards that clearly state what, the cross-section that we want for various kinds of streets. We categorize the streets not only in terms of motor traffic, which is typically called local streets, for the ones in front of your house, collector streets that, and all the local streets feed into like a longer collector street, such as, let me see, I think West Devil's Lake Road might be one, or it might be actually a minor arterial. The busiest streets, the ones that are used primarily for moving traffic as opposed to access to individual properties, although it serves both in our case, are the arterial streets. And the highway is our main principal arterial here in town. So anyway, but we, we talked about that categorization, but we also talked about low-use, medium-use, and high-use walking and biking streets. So we added a, a level of complexity and sensitivity, I think. Anyway, in, in the summers, traffic volumes are typically 20% higher than they are during the rest of the year on the average weekday. So, and I don't have to tell you that probably. This is the, the, what we called the Gap before we had our highway project. And so we finally, after a very long time of talking about it, we, it is now complete and we have a new traffic control signal at 32nd Street. And this was very important for getting people across the highway here. The school is on the other side, so it's obviously a place where people want to cross and would like to be able to send their children across the street to get to school, but only if it's safe. And so this really helps. There was really no way of getting across before and very difficult for cars even to get on and off the highway at this location before the traffic control light. So, anyway, having this new improvement makes our area more attractive for development. On the east side of the highway particularly, a lot of the area was underdeveloped or vacant. And so now that we have this highway improvement, it, I think brought, has brought a lot of attention to the area. One of the things that we are concerned about as we develop is that we want to be able to maintain our community character. And Nell Scott is, has a really great community character, and the neighbor, neighbors are organized and very vigilant about their character. So as we are planning for the Nell Scott area, we want to make sure that we respect what it is that they like about the community and, and want to preserve. And it's good for the whole city of Lincoln City because it does add so much to our community. Without a plan though, the highway improvement might encourage strip development. And there's, even though we have regulations, even in the general commercial zones, we have commercial design standards, but they speak more about a particular property and a particular building than they do about the layout of the, of the uses. And so we really needed a plan that would address how we want this area, this neighborhood to continue to develop. This is the Nell Scott Strip, and the planning area extends from the south end here, about 35th Street, all the way up to 20, northeast 23rd, which is where Sean has his business. So here is the planning area. The Transportation Growth Management Department program at the state has money, it's, it's a joint, sort of a combined program that's shared by the Department of Transportation and the Department of Land Conservation and Development. So they have a program where they give out money to help cities do planning projects. And in this one, I, but you have to apply. I applied and the original grant award was about $150,000 to do a planning study for this area. This was particularly attractive, I think, to the reviewers of the grant because it, the plan will help protect the, the highway, the new highway project. It will direct traffic to appropriate places. It will hopefully reduce excessive numbers of driveways and that kind of thing. So, so anyway, that seemed very attractive to them. They gave us, I guess they gave us $160,000. And fortunately, we have received a supplemental amount because we were pretty close to the end of our, our planning process and ODOT didn't like something and we had to back up. And so we have, it stalled our project for a number of months and also required more work on the, a part of the consultants. So, so they agreed to give us money to make sure that we would be able to complete it as planned. So this, let me just describe where we are. This is northeast 23rd. Northeast 23rd goes out to our primary industrial area in town. And this area is, it has a lot of vacant space that I think you can see through this aerial photo, but it also includes the car compound, what do you, pound, what do you call it? Huh?
Impound lot.
Impound lot, thank you. Yeah, compound in some, it all, it includes the FedEx, car repair places, that kind of use, and which were very important to the city. It is right now out in the county. You can see that we have color on the, on the west side, north and south, but this big gap in here is actually in our urban growth boundary, but outside the city limits. So when we want to develop this annexation, we'll have to be one of those first things that we do, one of our first steps. But, yes.
Is the city limit delineated by the colored sections?
Yes. Anything that's in color here is in the city. That's showing zoning, faded out zoning. This is, and that's why this does not show up.
That's all county.
This dashed line is our urban growth boundary, so it comes out to the, yeah, to the limits here.
Got it, okay.
Right.
So the orange part down there is in the city now?
Orange part, this?
Yeah.
This, okay. This, this is, yeah, this is all in the city now.
And if I remember right, there are some apartment houses up there that you can get to from 101, turning on.
I'm not sure what you're referring to, although maybe what you're thinking about is on 32nd, as you go towards the high school, a large apartment complex here, and then you get closer to the high school and there's the spyglass apartments. So there are quite, quite a number of apartments at the south end of this. I also would like to draw your attention while we're looking at this. Here is the spyglass open space down in this corner and the Agnes Creek open space up in this corner. And one of our, our hopes is to try to, to make some connections between those two during this planning process. Also, in this area, the spyglass open space, the high school sits right down here. Also, we have the Taft Elementary School and Middle School and the Community College.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, it's a really a nice location for a new neighborhood to develop.
Good question. Since you pointed out that that's not in our community at this point in time, but is in the urban growth boundary.
Yes.
How much say do we have over anything until we annex it?
Well, the county, it's county zoning, and any applications go through the county, but they always ask us for comments. So, and there are some things in the code like, you know, if, if it, we intended to have something developed and somebody wanted to put in a road, they would consult our Public Works Department on standards for that to be built. I'm trying to think what else I can add to that. Anybody else want to add anything to that? No, I don't think so.
But currently, someone could approach the county with a development plan for that area and not be annexed into Lincoln City and yet be developed under county zoning, zoning, correct?
It depends on what they want to do. If it was a single-family home, for instance, they might be able to develop a single-family home with a septic system. That would be under the county's jurisdiction. But if they want something that's going to require city sewer and water, we have control that way.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, for instance, right here, this is Devil's Lake Rock, you can tell by looking at it, I think. Yeah, and that's one of our largest flattest pieces of property in town. They might like, at some time, want to entertain the idea of selling it. If they did, that's probably a prime location for a, a big box store. Because it's large enough and flat enough and we don't have too many places like that. But here again is where we get into the, the question about, you know, what is compatible with the Nell Scott character. And so through this planning process, we have not ruled out the idea of a big box, but we have talked about how it might fit into our character rather than becoming sort of a separate development of its own. And so that's something that I can show you a little bit more later, but I think I'm getting maybe a little bit ahead of myself. But let's go on here for a minute. Okay, so this is, again, it's the same picture without the aerial. And here you can see the relationship to the schools and the college. And the existing Nell Scott neighborhood on the east side. Okay, I just would like to mention that we got a lot of support for this grant application. Many of our community organizations were happy to write letters. And we sent out a request for proposals. We advertised on ORPEN and APA, which are, go way beyond the, you know, the Lincoln City market area. And this is an Oregon program where almost all the consultants look at it. And, and then our American Planning Association. So we were very clear about what we wanted. We told them how much money we were getting in the grant and asked them what they could do for that amount of money. And then we selected the consultants after reading proposals, meeting top proposers, and checking references. And we had a committee to do that. The committee for this, the, the project management team for this is Richard Townsend, Lila Bradley, Allison Robertson in Urban Renewal, Stephanie Reed, who's our city engineer, and myself. So as soon as we got the grant, got started, we sent letters out to all the property owners. I believe, let me see, there were 90-some property owners and, yes, and a total of 131 parcels. Many of the property owners are interested in selling or hope to develop their properties. And so they have been very supportive, very interested in the project. And I, it's just too bad that it kind of has dragged on a little bit longer than expected because we do have a lot of enthusiasm. Our, our most recent meeting was June, in June of 2015. We really got, have had some great coverage by the newspaper and the media. We do make an effort of letting them know when our meetings are, what's happening with the plan. And we have, you know, spent time talking on the radio about it and, and trying to get the word out as best we can. And moving our meeting locations around so that everyone has a chance and, and it gains some visibility that way. Our project advisory committee is comprised of representatives of various organizations in the community. We like to do that rather than selecting people. We, we just, you know, ask the organizations to send us a representative and they can send us somebody who they think is appropriate and who has the interest and time to participate. We have done a lot of, like I said, a lot of outreach. We had, James Rojas is an award-winning planner from the LA area. He is Hispanic, but he doesn't speak Spanish, which was kind of a disappointment to us. But we had other Spanish speakers who were on hand. But James specializes in this hands-on type of planning. And we did several activities with, with the school groups and with older adults, with the general community, where he would ask people to use any of these found objects. He had a whole sack full and to make, to depict their favorite childhood memory. And then that would talk about, you know, why was that your favorite memory? What was it about your community that, that made it, you know, memorable to you? And also then, they worked together to create their ideal city. So it was an interesting, fun activity, but then as we asked questions about, everyone described what it is that they had made. And we could draw out a lot of information about what they like and, and cherish about, about their communities that they've lived in and what they would like to see in their communities in the future. We set up a design center in the, it was in an open storefront in Taft. It's now been rented, but it was Ron Rubin who lent us his storefront and the Nell Scott Strip. And so Lawrence, this is Lawrence, the, the architect. He was hard at work here on drawing. He, he started with, with a base map. And you can see we have, well, this is Roger Sprague and this is Scotty Scott and he's park board. And Roger was a council member at the time. We also had a number of property owners come by. It was open basically all week and so everybody got a hand in talking about it, finding out about it, and making suggestions. Our most recent meeting was at the Eagles. That was the one in June. And we rolled out the, a plan that was, everybody was pretty excited about it and we're still excited about it, but after the Department of Transportation got a hold of it, we had to make some changes. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a second. But this is the team. This is Kirsten Green is our lead planner, and this is Rich Catlin with Recent Associates Engineers. Also, our, our transportation system plan engineer, John Boskit from DKS was involved. And then this is our TGM, State Contract Manager. And maybe you recognize some of these other people. This is Lawrence Kumar, who's the architect. So Lila, Allison, Richard, and me, and Kurt Olson was, was in the group at that time. He's since retired. So now I'm going to switch over to talk, to show you a presentation that Lawrence Kumar gave to the, to the project advisory committee. And this is, was a while ago, but a lot of this is still good. And then I'm going to switch back to this in order to show you our most recent concept. Okay, so this was back in May and, and this, these were the objectives for the meeting. This is our schedule. And we started this project in about two years ago. And we were expecting that we would finish up in August of 2016. And we were doing just fine, but ran into a little roadblock, so to speak. Lawrence was talking about all the things that we want to consider as we're looking at planning. And of course, we have the beach accesses, highway accesses. Most people are willing to walk five minutes to get to a store or something, you know, rather than get in their car. And so that's what the small circle is. That's the five-minute circle. And, and then, you know, quite a few people are willing to do 10, 10 minutes and go a half a mile. So that's, he's using those circles as a way to kind of figure out- So that's, he's using those circles as a way to kind of figure out how we can provide a mix of residences and businesses, services, and employment, schools, so that a lot of people will be on foot rather than in their cars clogging up the highway. He wanted to talk about, oh, he did talk about the existing retail core in Nell Scott, the cinema at the south end, the schools, community buildings, parks and open spaces, and nature trails. So a lot to consider. Also, topography, which I'll get into in a little bit. But he looked at the existing street network. And you see, we have a lot, we're lacking a lot of connectivity here. And part of that is, some of that may be unavoidable because of topography, but some of it may be because we haven't had an overall plan for development and have required people to connect as the neighborhood develops. So another thing that he's pointing out here is we need parallel streets to the highway. We typically will have some cross streets, but this is the only, this is the only north-south street in this section, and that is a problem. So we're trying to figure out, how can we add some off-highway connectivity? I think this is our vision statement about what we'd like to see in 2045. We want to see development both on the east and west, economically vibrant and attractive for year-round residents, value for property owners and tenants. And so the focus in this plan is more about our permanent residents than it is about our tourists. Most of the tourists want to be on the west side of the highway anyway. So we're focusing on a lot of the undeveloped land on the east side. And that we're highlighting in our plan these lifelong learning opportunities. And of course, our alternative types of transportation. Our goals, touched on all these things. Lifelong learning, I just, basically repeating what I just went and read through. And then we took a look at the current zoning. And again, the pink here is county. And these other uses look familiar to you, I think. Red is commercial. This kind of purple-ish color down here is the Nell Scott. They have their own zoning. And it's divided into highway zoning, cottage residential, and oceanfront. And then yellow is low-density zoning. Brown is multifamily typically zoning. So then, look at, look at our topography here. This is twenty percent or more grades, and that's a pretty steep grade. We don't like to have any streets that are over twelve percent. So that gives you an idea of some of the challenges then in developing this street, off-highway street system. So now, you know, Lawrence has, to the twenty percent grade analysis, he's added a possible first parallel street network. And he's trying to avoid those really steep climbs, climbs or declines, and still provide for connectivity. He's also focused on, more than I had anticipated, but I'm glad he has, focused on how this neighborhood connects to the neighborhood of the north. And this is, let me see here. This is the end of Orr and Port where it just, it's kind of, it becomes a loop street. I don't know, maybe a lot of you have never even been up in this neighborhood, but if you go...
It ends at the woods.
It deadends at what used to be woods, but now it's all been clear-cut.
Yeah.
Yes. So, so anyway, showing some connectivity. And by doing this, we can get people to, all the way up to East Devil's Lake Road without going on the highway. And in some times, what we don't want is this to be some like, you know, busy arterial. And we have emphasized that over and again, that this would be like a two-lane street, but just as coast is on the west side. It is a way that all the residents who live here know that you can get around town by getting through those streets and staying off the highway. We'd like to have the same kind of thing happen here. And also, when people are walking and biking, to be able to do that without having to go down to the highway. So I can get into a little more here. You'll notice that we're crossing an area here that is not now part of our, in our urban growth boundary. It's that forestry area that's been clear-cut. So this may be a good time if we want to try to figure out some future alignment here to act on that and preserve it. Lawrence...
Will you have to annex that to the city then? If you're going to develop the road, or can you get the state to develop?
Well, that's a good question, Miles. And I'm not, I'm not sure exactly how that, what we'd like to do is expand, maybe consider, and it's one of the recommendations the plan will be, to consider trading this, this area, which is in our urban growth boundary, but it's very rough and very wooded still. It has not been clear-cut. And maybe rather than showing this as future development, show part of this as future development. So in order to do that, we have to go to the state and ask for permission to change our urban growth boundary. And then, you know, depending on what we anticipate doing with this. If it's just streets, I don't know, you know, I'm not sure exactly what that would entail. If we want more development, we may actually want to talk about annexation, as we will with this piece when the time comes. Lawrence liked to look for inspiration in the community, community's history. This is the Nell Scott, excuse me, Nell Scott Auto Park. And it was a place where people would come with their cars, and they had little cabins. I think maybe this is the Eagles' original. Yeah.
And some of those cabins are still there. That road is still there.
So it's, it says it's reminiscent of the finest northwest coastal communities, and it embodies timeless architectural traditions found in Nell Scott. That's the way Lawrence talks. But it's true, you know. And here, he's showing, okay, here's a perfect example where we have a retail store, we have a community building, public green here. See the picnic tables? The larger cottages, smaller cottages. And he's mentioning apartments and townhouses. I'm not sure if they are actually represented here, or, you know, that's just his concept that that would be true. But I know that in the past, and maybe even now, there are residents, residences that are part of the Nell Scott Strip. You know, I mean, it's, they're apartments tucked in there and behind and so forth. Here's our, a couple pictures from our Design Week again that he shared. Now, here are some of the focuses of the plan. Location of neighborhood centers, street network, which we've talked about a lot, mixed-use elements, and employment district. And I'll get into a little bit more about that. This is the original plan that he did following Design Week. And this is a lot of mixed-use in here. And as you go up the hill to the east, it's less dense. We still have our industrial area back here. And he's showing the street pattern. We're showing some greenways along wetlands and streams that we also would like to include walking trails where we can do that, that would come, as you can see, you know, from Agnes Creek. We come down, we connect, and we get over here, and you can walk all the way to the school, you know, off-highway. Also, up in some areas where it's rough, especially on the edge of the neighborhood, you've got some green, open spaces. But in here, we have one park that's the, sort of, the center of the community. Where we ran into trouble was Lawrence loved the idea of what he called the slip lane in front of the Nell Scott Stores and the Nell Scott Strip. And he said, you know, we could do the same thing over here. He really liked it because the storefronts all face the highway, but they're set back off the highway, and there's a way to access them, you know, that's calmer and more sane than expecting people to just turn off the highway. So he really liked that, wanted to duplicate that here. We have a Baldi Creek, which runs along the east side here, and then it crosses underneath the highway and goes on over to the ocean. Baldi Creek starts way back in this part of the plan, up by Twenty-third. It's been undergrounded, so it's actually exists under Devil's Lake Rock. But we talked about maybe opening that up, and so that it becomes a feature of the neighborhood. And it would run along this side, and it would be in between the highway and then, and then these uses, the mixed-use.
If you open that up, that would take away that flat, big piece of property.
Yeah, well, that's right.
Because it goes right through the middle of it.
We can't open it all up, can we? And still have a big, flat parcel. So, you know, it depends on who comes in there and wants to develop. Like, right here, you can see, it's a little blue line right along here, leaving this still as a big piece. So anyway, ODOT did not like this slip lane idea because they, it was so close to the highway that if people are coming off the highway, they were afraid they would stack up here on a busy day, blocking traffic on the highway while people are making their turn to get on the slip lane. So we've, we've had a couple meetings since then with ODOT people. And we had one in the summer, and then again, just in December. We had ODOT, we had all our consultants out here and our project management team. And so we talked about alternatives. And I can show you that. That'll be my last slide that I'll show you. But going on with what Lawrence's vision that he was sharing in May, this is the Thirty-second Street intersection. And here is the Nell Scott Strip. This is in addition to, not in place of the Eagles. That raised some excitement, because people thought he was doing away with that. Trying to add in some uses here to make this continuously interesting as you're going west to the ocean. On the east side, we do have uses here. He's showing that maybe those uses are expanded or built up. This is vacant property that is actually, belongs to the Urban Renewal Agency for the city. So an opportunity to create, create an impressive intersection where now it's, you know, a little bit lackluster on the east side. So that's, that's his concept for how that would work. And he provided some photos to show mixed use. I think you may recognize some of these things. He worked in, is it Bella Beach? South of Lincoln City. And some of those pictures are from that, some of them are from other communities. But, you know, these are all the things that make a commercial or a mixed-use area interesting. From Portland to, you know, Cannon Beach and other places, Bella Beach. And different types of housing he's talking about. In this case, you know, maybe you have your apartments above the store. I think that's what he's showing in several of these. You might have townhouses, a higher-density development type. And we don't have much of that around here, but it certainly would, would serve a market. And then he talks again about the street network, which is basically the same except for this slip lane. And we'll have to show you how he's, you know, figured out a different way to address that. But the, this is our neighborhood collector, is what we're calling it. And so is Twenty-third, out to the employment area, and south to the schools. The green are queuing streets, so they're narrow streets, and you may even have to wait to get past one another if there's, especially if there's parking. And then alleys, alleyways are also a part of this design so that the house fronts can face the street and the garages and the trashcans can be in the back. This is a concept for the slip lane. Right now, we have, Charter of Communications sits on the south corner. And in front of that, we have a large, I'm guessing, ten-foot-wide sidewalk. And that was kind of one of his inspirations for why not just make it a, you know, a slow-moving car access. But if we can't do the car access, we're giving up on that. But we're saying, yes, we still want to have a sidewalk that connects the whole way. And here's, on this left side of this slide, is showing Baldi Creek and making that into an amenity. So that could be very, a very nice look from the highway. And also, it could be very pleasant for these, whatever develops along here, to have frontage, you know, have doors that open onto this space. So we're not looking at the rear end of everybody's building that's facing east. So that's, that's always a challenge, because of course, it's, it's better to be set back a bit from the highway. You want to have a door where you have parking, but you don't want this to become a big parking lot. So I think this is a nice way to address this. Lawrence got into talking about the different zones that he showed on the map and how it changes as it moves away from the highway. This is a very classic type of arrangement. From the downtown district to urban environments to less urban, more, you know, less dense, and then finally, you get to rural. And his plan shows along the highway, it's not maybe downtown, you know, city, but it is, that would be the densest part. And then it would gradually, as it moves east and up the hill, become less dense. So you have your concentration of activity here. But yet, people can walk in from these other transics. So, vertical and mixed-use is what he's showing facing the highway. And again, it could be that, it says vertical and horizontal, meaning that you could have apartments above businesses, or, you know, maybe you have some apartment buildings and next to, or townhouses, and next to it, you might have a business building. There are some issues we found with them having mixed-use where the apartments are above because it does kick in high-priced sprinkler systems. So, you know, that's, that can be an issue. But, and sometimes businesses just aren't set up that way. So quite a bit of flexibility in terms of what goes in these buildings. It could be light assembly, like, you know, a guitar maker, a shoe repair shop. It could be retail. It could be housing or a combination. So then village community, this is his concept, the Olivia Beach area. And Lawrence was the architect behind that development, so he knows what he's talking about here. But he kind of sees that this would be, as we're moving up the hill to the east, we would have these kinds of single-family homes. And then when we get up into the hillsides, he's just showing different kind of development here. Again, these are both from Olivia Beach, I believe. And then the employment district. I don't know that these are buildings that we'd have out there, but he actually suggested that maybe we have a lower standard of, you know, in terms of the appearance of buildings because they are tucked away back there. And not all buildings have to have a strong public appearance, so, or, or street appeal. So he was talking and made some suggestions on how you can have not good-looking buildings, but not necessarily fancy buildings for the employment district. And the idea, of course, is that, you know, wouldn't it be great if people could, who are working out in this as it develops, we get more business out there, and then they can walk to work? I mean, there's hardly, there aren't too many places in town where we can, we can say that's true. So let's see. Again, he's talking about the, his idea for transport... Again, he's talking about the, his idea for transportation. We don't want a street that drives people away, but that invites people to walk along it. And, he's showing his cross-section of his slip lane. Now, I imagine what will happen, instead of having the driving lane, we won't have a driving lane, but we will have sidewalk, a wide sidewalk, we'll have a bike lane, and we'll have this nice amenity of Baldi Creek. And, instead of having then, maybe, all the businesses face on this lane, they might face each other on the corner, on the cross streets. So, financial, how are we going to pay for this? Well, it's possible that there would be a new Urban Renewal District. Workforce housing strategies, we are talking about affordable housing anyway, and this may be one of those areas where we want to emphasize affordable housing. And, there are grants out there, and we can keep trying. State highway grants and watershed grants with the Baldi Creek. It is, or has been, a fish-bearing stream, and so the environmentalists are interested in improving it, and getting it, restoring it.
Deborah?
Yeah.
By creating a new Urban Renewal District, would that give us access to federal funding or state?
Well, Urban Renewal is, the way that works is, you establish a base in an area, and then, as it develops, and then maybe you put in some infrastructure, like, you know, a sewer system, or, you know, a new street, or something like that. Something that enables the private owner to come in and develop. So, by establishing this tax base, you know how much tax value you have in the neighborhood before you put in your improvements. Then, you get new development based on that. That increment that you get in taxes, rather than sharing it with the school district or the, and the county, it all comes to the city to help pay for those improvements. So, that's where the increment comes from. And, that's how that works, basically. I'm sure I'm oversimplifying it. But, yeah, that's how that would happen. It helps us put in infrastructure that enables private development.
Deborah, I have a question about the highway funding. You know, you started your presentation by talking about how long and lean the city is.
Uh huh.
And it really is the highway, 101. The only access ingress to the city, or out of the city.
Uh huh.
I'm wondering, are there state or federal highway funds available for infrastructure that aids in emergency and disaster planning? And, what I'm thinking is there, there's one way in and one way out. We, we know that we're under danger from tsunami. We know 101 is under danger of tsunami damage. Is there any funding that's available, or matching funds, or grant funds that are available to, for example, put in that highway from, from East Devils Lake Road South that would also provide an alternative exit route?
We will investigate that, yeah. And I think, I'm hoping you're right, that there are funds. I think that, you know, we have to assume that the highway's not going to be in very good shape after earthquakes or certainly a tsunami. And, so, you know, that's why our emergency preparedness people always say, you have to be prepared to be on your own, you know, more or less, for a long time.
It'd be nice if you could get the highway built before the eclipse.
Oh, wouldn't that be nice? Yeah. You know, the city had, many years ago, an opportunity for a bypass. And, at the time, I think that the people who had invested in Lincoln City felt that that would take business away from the city, and so, you know, they rejected that. Am I right, Richard? I think Richard's been here long enough to tell this story.
Actually, I wasn't here when that happened. That was back in the 60s. Yeah, there was concern by merchants that it would, a bypass would harm the city, so...
Yeah. Well, I'm not thinking about, you know, a big highway bypass around Lincoln City. I'm just thinking, an alternative route uphill.
Right.
From 101, that it may not be a fast, straight route, that it'd be a route nonetheless.
It's a way to get there, yes. And I, we definitely will be using that argument as we're applying for, you know, funds, if funds are available. A lot of our funding has, focuses on the highway in the state, you know, it's a highway program. But, I think we were careful to call that, that north-south parallel street a collector, because that gives us more of an opportunity to apply for money. He wanted to call it something else, and our advisor said, you know, call it a collector. So, so anyway, yeah, I think that's a possibility, that we might be able to find some funding. We would like to, certainly. And otherwise, you know, we may be relying on development, either, you know, extending things in anticipation of development, and paying for it through that increment, or, you know, waiting for it to develop on its own, and then incrementally develop.
How political is getting funds from the state of Oregon? Is that real political, or just, it's just difficult because of limited resources that the state has?
Well, it's difficult, but we have gotten quite a few grants over the years, and for parks, for, and for this transportation and growth management grants. We got this one, it also paid for our walking and biking plan. ODOT paid for our transportation system plan, and that was a very expensive study, and lasted over three years. And, so, you know, we get, and we've had this big highway improvement, which ended up being like $18 million. We are going to have another highway improvement north of town between Nyatsu, improvements to the Nyatsu intersection, and the West Devils Lake intersection with the highway all the way down to Logan. It's, we're going to be adding a shared-use path for walking and biking, and improvements to the intersection. That's coming up this next year. And, we're in the plan, I guess they're in the planning stages right now. So, we were able to get that funding. We worked with the tribe, who put up $300,000 match, which helped, you know, if you have match to put up, that certainly is a, is a good way to leverage your money, and get a grant. So, but yeah, we're competing with, with all the other cities on the coast who have similar problems, and, and cities in the valley that have their own issues. And, so, it's challenging. But, there is some money available in our transportation system plan. We do have in there, and I can't tell you exactly what the number is, but an estimate of how much money we might be able to expect, all other things being equal in the next 20 years, you know. And, it's enough to do some things, but certainly not all the things that we would like to do, or what we think we need, so... Okay, so Lawrence gets into our regulatory mechanism for how do we get the right kind of development in the right place. Form-based code is different than what we have. We have a code that, well, actually, we have different kinds of codes in different parts of town. Our traditional zoning shows commercial areas, residential areas, you know, professional campus areas, and different kinds of densities of residential. In a form-based code, the focus is more on the type of building, and, and building neighborhoods, nice streets, and neighborhood cores. And then, what's actually in the buildings, I was saying, you know, maybe light assembly, or shoe repair, or retail, or maybe mixed up with residential. With a form-based code, you can, you can specify how you want your community to look and function, and then, each individual property develops within that. So, it's a bit different. And, he does, in this draft plan, have descriptions of what each zone would be like, and what you would expect to find there. And, it also entails drawing a map, so you can see where the key intersections are, where you want to make sure you have doors opening onto that, and because, you know, every street is not going to be equal. Some of those are going to be more where people are going to want to go and hang out. Other ones are going to be quiet little streets that just provide access to the people who have uses on those streets. So, anyway, the diagram becomes more important in a form-based code type of plan, and that's what we're going for. I think that's about it for this slideshow. And, so, I'm just going to go back to... Okay, so, after we had our meetings with ODOT, and we regrouped in December, Lawrence came up with this plan. So, now we see that it's basically the same thing. You still have this, I think he's calling it Foothills Boulevard, is his name for the street. And then, this is our green space, that will be the sort of, the town square, the place where, yeah, the people gather. I lost my Harry pointer. Okay. And then, it will, so there will be more focus for retail. See, this dark red lines here are retail liners, that these stores will be facing each other and generating some activity in these areas. This comes, goes up pretty steeply off the highway. So, the green would be at the top of the hill, and then it goes up from there into the hills. We have some radial streets, we have some cross streets. So, doing our best to try to keep the parallel, they call them redundant, because it's the same direction, but it helps carry traffic and offer alternatives. So, anyway, that's kind of what we're looking at now. And, they are refining this map, they are also doing more analysis to make sure that it will function correctly. And, then they will be coming back in the spring for their last project advisory committee meeting, and after that, then the plan will come to the planning commission, and we'll be asking you for a recommendation of the city council. At that time, you'll have, I'm not sure whether Kirsten and Lawrence, I believe they will be presenting to you. So, this is just a little preview and background, so that when they come, you'll be ready.
Any questions, Deborah?
I just, whether they considered it, I mean, when you take that slip lane out, and you take the driving ability out along there.
Uh huh.
It almost takes the commercial, to me, it almost destroys the commercial line of thought in that area.
We spent a lot of time discussing that, and the fact that we're allowing mixed use here, you know, is, you know, it may be that most of this then is residential, with a little bit of commercial mixed in. The focus of the commercial, I, will move probably to these cross streets. And, we're showing, well, he's showing one here that won't happen anytime soon, because there's actually sand dune there now, but Devil's Lake Rock keeps, you know, keeps excavating, so, sometimes it's going to be flat. And then, and then we'll have more options. But, this will be, these cross streets will become more important as the commercial focus. And, so that's what they're talking about, especially, you know, right here. Right here would be the main, maybe the main street coming into the neighborhood. So, yeah, they're still working through some of those things. We fought long and hard, they really, Lawrence in particular, and Kirsten, I think more than Lawrence, hated to give that up. We did have an economist on the team, and she said exactly what you said, you know, that's not really going to be a great commercial if it's just pedestrian. On the other hand, you know, some cities have had, not a lot, but some cities have had very successful pedestrian streets in their downtowns. And, you know, trying to figure out what makes that work, and what can make that go wrong is important.
Yeah, if you, if you keep those sections, I've been to a couple that had nice ones. If you keep those sections really short, and then you have a lot of cross streets, you know, like in other words, real short blocks.
Right.
With the pedestrian traffic going down from maybe four store lengths.
Yes.
Another cross street.
St. Augustine's like that.
Oh, yeah.
That's exactly how it's set up.
Uh huh.
And the old...
In Florida, are we talking Florida?
But, it's a coastal town, and it's, you know, it's much larger than we are, but they started out this tiny little hub of a place, and all of the old cobblestone streets have been blocked off to car traffic, so they're nice and wide, and all the shop fronts are right there, and people live on top of them. You know, not necessarily the shop owners, but you know, they have tenants up there, and it's great, because they work down there, so they just come out and walk three blocks to their job.
And they probably also shop down there.
And they also shop down there.
Hang out there in the evenings.
Absolutely, so they're...
Generate a lot of activity.
Absolutely. And, even on the deadest of days, if you go to that section, that's where you're going to find all the locals.
Uh huh.
And if you can make a local hotspot, it'll bring in tourism.
Right. Yeah.
And there'll be a lot of walkability connections between the east side and the west side, because people living in that area will be within walking distance of the beach, and the Agnes Creek Open Space Area.
The Nell Scott Strip.
Nell Scott Strip. Cinema, yeah.
Right.
Will you start breaking ground soon?
Well, that would be exciting, wouldn't it? I think we need to finish our plan first, and then we really have to, you know, have a community conversation. I think this is where, when we do our visioning for the community comprehensive plan, that this will be a topic of, you know, of how are we going to prioritize this among all those other things that we want to do elsewhere in town? But, it does seem that this is a very logical place to provide a work-live situation near schools, near open spaces, and because it's on the east side, a more affordable place for locals. So, we're hoping that...
And out of the tsunami.
It is out of the tsunami. The tsunami comes up about right to the Nell Scott Strip, just comes up a little beyond that. So, this is just, just out. And, so that's a big plus, when we're planning a new neighborhood.
Thank you, Deborah.
You're welcome.
Yes, thank you.
All right. On the agenda now, we have reports and comments, any from the community development director?
I just want to let you know that we have selected the consultants for the comprehensive plan visioning process. It's a company called JRO and Company, also known as J. Row &amp; Co. Portland-based. The, we had put out requests for proposals, and got three proposals back. Checking the references for JRO and Company, I, my first reaction was, they must be married to these people, because I mean, they were so enthusiastic, and the other cities that I talked about, what a good job they'd done. So, we're really looking forward to that, and I think, really hopeful it'll be a good process. A lot of public involvement, a lot of outreach, it's not just going to be, come here and have meetings, there can be meetings all over the city, reaching out to people. A lot of technology, a lot, just all kinds of things going on.
When you're anxious about that going, that starting?
I've got a contract we need to have signed, so I, actually, I think things will start next month, so, in a few weeks.
And what's the focus of this company?
We have the opportunity to be involved in those meetings.
Yes, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Your turn.
The focus of the meetings, the purpose of it is...
No, 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 not the focus of the meetings, the...
No, 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 not the focus of the meetings, the focus of the company that you've hired, are they a, are they a public involvement firm?
Yes.
Are they an engineering firm?
They're, they're a public involvement visioning firm. And the, the ideas, this, we're going to be looking at, what do we want the city to be like over the next, it could be really twenty-three years, up to twenty forty, and setting the policies ultimately for how the city develops. And we've also did another request for proposals for developing a new preliminary master plan for the villages at Cascade Head property, which the city owns most of, and we selected, from the proposals we got, we selected Cogan Owens Green, it's the same people that did the, been working with on the Nell Scott Gap Plan, and that should also start next month.
Good news, yeah, thank you. Any comments from planning commissioners? All right. No public comments, there are no public here at the meeting?
Steve, could I, could I just mention that the Parks Master Plan, Parks and Recreation System Plan is going to the council on Monday with your recommendation to approve.
Great, thanks, yeah.
Do you want us to go to the meeting to, to voice our positive vision that, at least, I, I think positively about it. I looked at the place behind, over on Third Street, over to the police station.
Ah, yes.
That'd be a terrific place that you don't have to tie the land and such, and then I drove up around the villages, and I thought that has a great place for a second big park there also, right up at the end where it's close to the villages at the top end, but it's also close to Rhodes End, which would be an ideal location for a big-sized park.
Yeah. I did include that, that the planning commission gave a unanimous recommendation, so that's in their staff report, and, but if anyone wants to speak as individuals, you're welcome, isn't that right, Richard?
Yes.
I mean, anyone's welcome to go to the meeting and speak during the public comment part of the hearing in support, and you can say, you know, whatever you want to say.
Thank you. Future agenda items and next meetings, do we have anything looking, we might be on the agenda for our next meeting?
We have no, no hearings scheduled for that.
So, we'll wait to hear from you then, okay. All right.
Say, can I ask something? So, we didn't have a public hearing tonight for a variance, did everyone feel that they were prepared, as far as training, to hold a public hearing, or, yeah?
I didn't.
Okay.
I, I felt it.
Okay, good, that's just all I wanted to know, because we could, you know, we want to continue to do trainings, and as these things come up, if you feel like you need more on any topic, let us know.
I, I think the training has been real good so far.
Okay, great.
As one who doesn't, has never been involved in a public entity like this.
Great, okay.
Wait, wait until you have VRDs, no training is good enough.
All right.
I agree with you.
Tonight's meeting is adjourned.